About four minutes slow.
Hi. We all set, folks?
Good afternoon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Monday evening, October 7th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Gorham Planning Board. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please silence your cellphones? You don't have to shut them off, but we just don't want to hear that annoying ring. Thank you. Ms. Iman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank.
President.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Mr. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Delaney.
Here.
And Ms. Nichols.
Here.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, in your packet you have an approval of the September 9th, 2024, planning board minutes. I'd like to refer it to Secretary Mr. Burrows if you had a chance to review them. Any comments?
I did review them and found them to be well-written and accurate to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have any questions or concerns?
Just to echo the same opinion. Well-written and thorough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Is there a motion, please? Motion to accept these minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to accept the planning board meeting, meeting minutes of September 9th as written.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Is there a second? Ms. Nichols?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Any other discussion and no other questions, concerns? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Chairman's report. I...I'm sorry, I have a few things we want to share. One of the things, the transition that we have as a planning board, and I guess as a town side, is we have moved smoothly from Google email now to Outlook email, and maybe it hasn't gone too smoothly. And I've been asked to ask you if you knew this and if you've been able to log on and figure this whole thing out, because I know personally you can go upstairs and get a tutorial. So it appears everyone's all set?
I would like to sign up for attendance at that tutorial.
Got it. Will do.
My 26-year-old son helped me. Thank you.
My granddaughter helped me. Thank you.
Glad to hear it.
So, Mr. Frank, well, how can we send an email?
We will call you up.
We'll get a phone call. Let's make sure that we have your phone number and we'll set that.
We've actually addressed that situation as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. So with Chairman's report, continuing on, please. The last few months, we've tried to have some kind of tutorial or training thing or something, update on what we do here at the planning board. In August, we talked about the review process and how we get our documents and how we review them. It's not cold turkey. We have all kinds of information in front of us as we go through and discuss these projects. Last month, I caught Mr. Norton off guard. I asked him briefly about speed limits. He was able to give us some idea of how speed limits might be derived, and I appreciate that. This evening, I'd like to take a minute, if you would allow me. You've heard a lot of this information recently about the contract zone. Last week, the town council approved a contract zone on a local project. And maybe if I could refer to the planning board, I'm sorry, planning department, give us a brief, 10,000 words or less, what the contract zone really does and how it protects the town's interests. Thank you.
Certainly. The contract zone is a legal process that the town council literally votes on a contract to approve or disapprove it. It's exactly as it sounds. It's a special contract specifically laid out by attorneys, and that contract gets reviewed. It may or may not have a plan in place, the usual site plan that lays out roads, lots. It might be a subdivision. It could be a site plan or both in common. And we've seen all of those kinds of contracts come in front of the town council and the planning board. It's required to go through a process, because it is land use-related, that involves the planning board. So there is a public hearing at the planning board stage. There's a public hearing at the town council stage. The town council ultimately approves it, and the planning board has a recommendation authority, so you can recommend approval, and then it goes to the town council for their public hearing review.
Thank you. And in brief context, it's a negotiation going back and forth, and it deviates perhaps from the actual zone of that particular area that will allow more building, smaller space, et cetera, et cetera. Anyone from the planning board would like to add into that, please? Mr. Walsh?
May I? Thank you. I was complaining on bringing this up later. That was a good summary, Carol. I attended that meeting and the White Birch Town Council meeting, and, you know, you said at the town council, they had a public hearing as well as we had a public hearing with this body. The public hearing for with town council was not as well-attended as what we heard. So I think it's safe to say that the planning board probably heard more input, public input in this format than the council. I'm sure they heard it independently. I can't speak to that. But there was quite a bit of debate. It also struck me that they were not as aware of many of the, some of the issues as in-depth as we have seen it. I mean, obviously, we saw the issue seven times. They did not. And what struck, kind of came to mind in looking at that was, how can we make this better? One thing that I recommend, and I don't know if it's ever been done, is that we possibly in the future with something of that size or with contract zones, is possibly have a workshop meeting between the planning board and the town council, just to seek alignment and input. I think it could make the whole process move along a little better, and I think it could also lead to greater representation of views of the public, as well as that's valid.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Anyone else like to add to that?
I just want to say that we did have town council members participate on the sidewalk, and they also participated during the public hearing. We actually had a town council member speak at our public hearing. So there were, there was some involvement, but it was informal.
Sure, sure. Right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Moving along, please. Committee reports. Audience Review Committee, Mr. Walsh?
The audience committee has not met.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee, Mr. Frank?
My committee has also not met.
Hutch, thank you. Administrative Review Report, please.
We have had no applications.
Might be a quick, it might be a quick meeting tonight. Thank you. Moving along, please. Item one. Item one is a public hearing, major site plan amendment, Town of Gorham, Robey Park Master Plan, a proposal to amend the previous Robey Park site plan to make it consistent with the current Robey Park Master Plan, Zone Urban Residential, Map 106, Lot 47. The applicant is represented by Andy Morrell, PE, with BH2M. The planning department would like to open this up for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. The Robey Street, Robey Park Master Plan is exactly as it sounds. It's a master plan for the park that's across the street, adjacent to the high school and the municipal building. It went through the public process, and I know that's going to be explained, so that's all I'm going to say. This is to, for the planning board to review and approve the site plan because there's construction involved in it. Turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I am a member of the Robey Park Steering Committee, and I welcome the fellow members of the committee. I don't know if that's going to be a conflict here tonight. Want to open for discussion. I don't think it is.
Conflict in what respect? I'm not sure.
There is no monetary gain by you?
Correct.
For your review and/or approval of the site plan?
Unfortunately.
I'm sorry. Were you suggesting you thought there was a conflict of interest?
I'm opening it up for discussion. It may be, yes.
I'll throw it out. I don't see any conflict whatsoever. I've gone to some of those meetings. I don't think there's a conflict there. I appreciate your participation in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Poria?
Good evening, planning board. So Tom Poria, Director of Community Development, just quickly going to do an introduction on this item. I think I speak on behalf of not only staff, but the consultant, as well as the committee. We're excited to be here to start the site plan for this master plan. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin Aceto here shortly to walk through what this committee did to get us to this master plan and where we are right now. But I think as a board, as you review it, you'll see a master plan that encompasses a wide range of improvements that will address all types of uses for the park. So we're hopeful that this park becomes a mainstay for Gorham and the village area. So with that, I'll turn it over to Caitlin Aceto with Aceto Landscape.
Thank you. After we have these comments, this is a public hearing. We will invite the public come up to address us. Thank you.
Let's see. We have some visuals this evening. There we go. All right. Yeah, can you do that? All right. We're in business. So our location map, as Carol mentioned, we all know where Robey Park is, but for a little context, you can see on this map. Special note about the park is that it's the only park that has program available to all users during school hours, which makes it pretty special parcel of land in the town. So the process to date, a community survey was done prior to the master plan exercise. So Aceto Landscape Architects use this data to inform the process working with the Robey Park Steering Committee. As you can see, we went through quite a few steps working internally with the committee and also reaching out to the public. So this plan has been vetted, and we've invited input quite a few times from the community gathering site inventory. We held a charrette with the community. We also did outreach at the Thursday Night Food Truck Event, which was a lot of fun. We attended the farmer's market with members of the steering committee and also gathered input there. We held a public meeting as well to further vet the plan and eventually arrived at a master plan, which has since been adopted by the council. So we feel that what we're proposing tonight in the site plan really is a reflection of this master plan that was adopted. The only significant change, if you want to call it that, is that we had a survey completed by Andy Morrell of BH2M, and that survey work identified exactly where trees were so that, for example, this loop path was not, was sinuously running around the trees and protecting those trees. So for thoughtful considerations, utility placement, things like that. But other than that, the plan and the program contained within the plan is in line with what was adopted in the master plan. So with that, I'll pull up the site plan submission. Going to skip ahead to our overall plan. Yeah, so we've worked hand-in-hand with BH2M to create a plan that takes into consideration utilities, grading, and as you can see, we still have program elements such as the loop path, opportunities for seeding. We're preserving the white pines. We're also augmenting with additional plantings. We have the community garden. We have shaded spaces, water play. We have play equipment available for all ages, play berms, bike skills course, two basketball courts, which could also be used for yoga or other, any other program, programmatic elements that need space. The restroom shelter we're showing is the same one that is the vault toilet that the skate park has, so familiar, familiar structure there, bike parking. We also have an ADA path, ADA accessible path up to an embankment slide, and we've made choices with play equipment that we've, we've made recommendations and ultimately, Cindy will want to weigh in on this, but we've, we've suggested play equipment that is universally accessible because that's what we heard that the steering committee was interested in. So we have spinners that you can roll a wheelchair onto, play equipment with ramps, paths that are accessible. We are proposing important place rubber surfacing for universal accessibility. However, we are stating that mulch may be the way, the way to go for now, just from a pricing standpoint. And we're also selecting materials that can keep us under, under our stormwater threshold, so making sure that we are proposing a certain amount of impervious so that we don't need to implement significant stormwater infrastructure and go through that permitting process. So the amount of impervious materials, such as pervious pavers, for example, have been strategically chosen so that we don't need to consider significant stormwater implications. So that's, that's an overview of the program, pretty much remaining the same. And with that, unless Gracey have anything to add, we'll turn it over to Andy Morrell to speak to the engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Andy Morrell from BH2M. So as Caitlin was just saying, the big aspect of this design was to try to limit the amount of impervious area we were adding on-site. We all kind of worked, worked together to kind of work through that to keep our impervious, our net increase of impervious area under 20,000 square feet. We were able to do that with this design. We have some minor stormwater improvements. The runoff generally runs to the north from Morrell Ave towards Ballpark Road and the old railroad bed. So there are four field inlets that have been placed strategically throughout the site to collect any runoff. That runoff is then directed to an existing catch basin over by the basketball courts, as you can see it on Sheet 1, or I'm sorry, Sheet 2 of the plans. That runoff is then directed to the detention pond over by the parking lot for the high school, where it's ultimately discharged to the stream. Utilities for the project were some other things we worked on. The bathroom that was referenced, we are connecting that to public sewer down off of Ballpark Road, kind of along the walkway that runs down to Ballpark. The proposed water feature in the center of the park, we have provided, obviously, water and storm drain access to that, to be able to make that function. Another big aspect of the project is sidewalks. So we're proposing sidewalks along both Ballpark Avenue as well as Access Road. Those are shown on kind of, you can see it with the hatched area on the Sheet 2 of the site plans. I think it's my understanding Public Works is intending to build those as part of, as part of this project, so that's, that's the intent. Kind of summarize that on the plans as well, just to spell that out for you guys. Note number 11 is where you can find that on the plans. Another small part of the project is there are going to be some drainage improvements that'll be done to the existing softball field that's in the northern portion of the site. There's an underdrain system over there that needs some, needs some work, so we're going to, we're going to take that on as part of this project. What that'll involve, we won't really know until construction, but there are some notes on the plan that, that address that item. We did receive town comments last week. I think they're all pretty minor in nature, and I think we can address those as we move forward and before the board endorses the plans. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to throw it back to you and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? A public hearing is going to follow this. Do we have any questions directly right now for the Aceto Consulting or Andy? Thank you. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to address this issue, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Chabot, 17, Morrell Ave. Was the vice chair of the Steering Committee, Robey Park Master Plan Steering Committee. I just want to thank all the parties that were involved in putting together this plan. It's been a long road, but I think we are here to deliver a great treasure for the town. Obviously, it'll take baby steps before, you know, for us to get there, but I want to thank everybody for the support and Rob as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to address this? Going once. I see no one rising. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. Members of the board. Comments, please? Please, Mr. Burrows.
David Burrows, questions, I think for the landscape designers. In terms of maintenance and some of the features that are in here, what, what of these will take the most maintenance or is more likely to deteriorate before the others? And specifically, I'm thinking about the shaded picnic area. What is that made of and what kind of maintenance will that need?
Yeah, the shaded picnic area would be most likely, we're working on the construction detailing right now, so we have a little work to do still, but our initial thoughts were that it would be a wood pergola. So the lifespan of wood, you know, 2025, just keeping an eye on it, depends on if we use steel. However, the wood meets the ground, so that's part of the detailing that we'll be doing. We're, in terms of plantings, we are, we're specifying a mix of, well, all natives, but in some areas, we have things like rudbeckia that is great because it's self-seeding, it's beautiful, and you only have to mow it a couple times a year or during, throughout the summer and into the fall. So rather than getting the mower out all the time, we have pollinators that we're thinking about and things that can take care of themselves. We also are thinking about the acidity of the soils, since we have white pines and fairly acidic soil. We're thinking about fern plantings. We were thinking about blueberries, but we also know that deer like to visit this area, so we want to make sure that we're not spending a bunch of money to plant these wonderful shrubs and then have them eaten by deer right away. So we know that the ferns, they will leave alone, so that's, that's what we focused on, under the pines.
So just a little bit, to repeat my question a little bit, besides the shaded pergola, which I could see needing some maintenance, maybe it might be susceptible to vandalism, hopefully not, but other than that, what are the more fragile elements that, you know, after a couple of years, you might say, maybe we should have put in something a little sturdier or, or something that'll need to be repaired every, every few years? What do you think would be next?
Everything seems, nothing, it's going to be great. Maybe, yeah, that's a good one. The decomposed granite paths, we're saying that a stabilizer should be used. That will help, but decomposed granite always tends to need annual maintenance. So that loop path made of decomposed granite would need to be maintained. If it were asphalt, that would not need as much maintenance, but it would also be a little harsher on the landscape. So that would probably be the next one. That's a good point, Grace.
I'd say, I think most of the materials we're using are pretty hardy, and the good thing about wood, like you said with the pavilion structure, is that...
Could you please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
For the pavilion structure, the good thing about wood is that instead of metal or something that might be vandalized with paint or something, you might not be able to get it off, you might free paint it. Wood, you can just sand it off. That makes it a little bit easier to maintain from a vandalizing, from a vandalizing standpoint.
Okay, thanks. It's well-thought-out design.
Ms. Nichols, please.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. One, I have about 30 blueberry bushes, high bush, and deer all over because I feed them.
Ms. Nichols?
Oh, I have a lot of blueberry bushes at home, and the deer never bother them. They eat all my hostas, but they don't touch my blueberries. However, the birds love my blueberries. So I wouldn't discourage you from planting blueberries. That still might be a nice option. The other thing is, I have two questions. The community garden, it looks like those might be raised beds?
Yes.
And is the idea that that would be planted by the committee or by somebody, and then it's available for people to go and clip parsley or whatever's planted? Or a little more on that?
I think that right now, we're approaching it, we're providing, we're going to provide details for how the beds can be constructed, and then I think there's already a group, as we understand it, that's fairly active or that has, takes care of the beds and would probably want their involvement and opinion on how, how the beds are shared moving forward. So we would be providing the constructibility of getting the infrastructure in, and then I think there would be another layer of having the community provide input on exactly how the beds are used.
And I would encourage you to involve the schools in that. My, my next question is on the water play area. That seems to me like that might require quite a bit of maintenance, unless, I'm not sure what is actually going to be there, but that seems like that might be one of the high-maintenance.
Yeah, so we, we have, we've purposely kept it very simple. We have a concrete pad, if you will, with boulders placed in it, some stones that you can kind of hop and skip through, but we have flush jets proposed currently, so we don't have big sprayers that you need to take down and store in the winter. We're proposing just, just pop jets that can be, they would need to be monitored, but there wouldn't be a lot, a lot to do with, with those jets, if that makes sense.
Have you seen, like, other play, water play areas like that, that function? And I ask because I have, I have some water, bird baths that require quite a bit of maintenance, I'm learning, or they get algae in them very, pretty quickly. So I, that's what I was more worried about, is whether or not, how that water flow would be, is it...
Yeah, so, well, it will be, it'll be potable water that runs out to the sewer, and the drainage will be designed such that we'll make sure it drains itself, so there won't be any standing water in it. And, yeah, we are currently working on a splash pad at the Kiwanis Aquatic Center in Portland, so we are familiar with how these, how pop jets can be integrated and having them self-drain and go out to the storm sewer.
Okay, I am looking forward to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one question. You mentioned on the mulch material for the play area and the cost savings of going with wood mulch versus a rubber or some other synthetic material. Is there any environmental concern between those two as well? I would always kind of urge us to go away from putting more synthetic material in the ground.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, I think definitely, there's... Yeah, yeah, and that's, I think, definitely, there's, plastics are of concern, for sure. So, we provided the option of plastic for the universal accessibility, but we said we know plastic is not ideal from a health perspective, so we gave the secondary option. So, it's kind of like choosing, do we pick a material? We'll have to see how the bids come in, too, but do we pick a material that's universally accessible, or do we pick for environmental reasons? So, that will be-
Steering Committee's decision, or how does that, I don't know, who in the town is gonna make that decision? How does that get made? You may not know the answer to that, but-
I think, for now, unless Tom wants to speak to it, yeah, I'll let Tom decide.
There's gonna be a couple components coming forward. So, one is gonna be how much funding we have to, to implement this plan. So, this is gonna be a stage implementation of what we, how we roll this out, and really, I think, getting the rec director involved as well as other staff to see what is the, the right material to go into the playground, right? We've got to talk about accessibility, we've got to talk about safety of the kids being in that playground area, so if you're trying to make it accessible and you're trying to make it for young kids to utilize in the playground, if they fall or something happens, you can't use pavement, you can't use these hard topics, so it's either going to be wood or that rubberized material. So, I, I don't think this is gonna be an easy solution, there's gonna have to be some give, and maybe it's a mix of both, until we dial it in with, with the contract and the consulting, we won't know for sure, but it'll be, it may have to be a both.
Can I add one point? And there's also, the maintenance was brought up, so wood mulch has annually, you'll have to verify that you have the proper depth, so there'll be a little bit more monitoring of the wood products. But, yeah, to add on to what, what Tom said.
Mr. Frank, please.
Thank you. The playground equipment itself, could you give us some sense of, of the, the nature and, and the type and the scale of it? I, I'm familiar already with the playground equipment at our elementary schools. It's, it's nice stuff, the kids love it. Will you, will you pretty much be duplicating that type of arrangement, perhaps on a smaller scale?
We have a little bit of everything. It's pretty exciting. We are offering, one of the things that came out of all of our outreach was having nature play. So, we have, it's like I'm stuck, but we have spider climbers, we have swing sets and swings for all ages, the little ones to, over on the right, we have everything labeled to coincide with an age group, so we have things that you can climb on, we have spinners that are flush with grades, so kids can pile on and go in circles, lots of spinning. We have towers, little springers that you can get on, and the little ones can go back and forth. Embankment slide, a little play hut with desks for the six-month to five-year-olds, music play, six months to five years, little truck that two- to five-year-olds might enjoy playing with, balance beams, so that's more along the nature play lines. The jungle dome is something that kids can climb up. Yeah. So, yeah, please.
So, we wanted to focus on really, like, two main things when picking this play structure. The first one being kind of trying to lean more towards the nature play aspect of playground furniture, and then also having a variety of equipment that's applicable for a bunch of different age groups, because we heard that this park is open all year, or all day long, we want anyone to be able to come use it, not just little kids or not just older kids. So, we picked a variety of play equipment that kind of satisfies all of those needs. So, you'll see that it's all pretty different, but all trying to use more wooden materials, less plastic when we can. Some of the more universally available equipment, or universally, universally accessible equipment, sorry, is, tends to be more traditional playground equipment looking, but we felt like, that that was more important than the material, and a lot of the equipment is universally accessible, as that was one of the number-one priorities that the committee had.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols.
I have one other question. As far as the maintenance and, you know, taking care of the park, is it going to be Public Works that's taking care of it, or Parks and Rec? And do they have the manpower to handle that?
It'd probably be both, and do they have the manpower? I'd hope so, but I, I think, more important than, I think, manpower is, there's the committee that's, that's, that's done the open space master plan, and they're looking to do Friends of Roby Park, so hopefully we'll get some, with the implementation of the master plan and moving forward with such a great master plan, we'll hopefully garner, garner support for this master plan process in this facility in Gorham to have volunteers help out as well as, as town staff. So, I think that's, as we move forward, we're looking, again, for this thing to be kind of a important part of the park committee and then garner support for it, so. And I think, once you get volunteers involved, they can get out to counselors, and as part of the budget process, you can identify resources for it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walsh, please.
And, and what's the timeline for the project, once approved?
Uh, the first phase, I'm, I'm looking to get out to bid this fall, and then hopefully start construction. I don't think we'll be able to do it this winter, but hopefully line up the contract to start in the spring, and hopeful for a phase, the first phase, to be to a scale that garners some momentum as we move forward with the next phase after that. So, we haven't nailed down that first phase, but it looks like this fall and then into spring next year.
Good, very good-looking project.
Anyone else? I have a few things myself, if you don't mind. Great project, I've seen it, there's so much enthusiasm. There's a few of us here that remember when Roby Park was thoroughly treed, and thanks to some weather events, we have what we have now, so we can move forward. It was well attended, great participation by everybody, and I believe you're a Gorham High graduate, are you not?
I am not.
You're not?
I wish I was.
I, I was led to believe that you were a Gorham High grad during this whole process.
Wow.
Well, maybe you should've been, okay, I'm sorry. All right, I have this finding of facts, and I'm gonna go through this as quickly as I can. On page six, for example, it's talking about vehicular access to the site will be on Morrel Avenue. So, rhetorically, I'm gonna ask, I'm hoping this park is full of people all the time. Rhetorically, when are we gonna finally get a traffic light at the end of Morrel Ave and South Street? I look into Mr. Norton, he's gonna choke on his water, and I don't want to know. I'm just, just asking, and, and no answer required, please. One of my questions was, Terry Dearing is not here and Cindy Hazelton is, so Cindy's gonna say it's Terry Dearing's responsibility to take care of this Public Works, but it's a combined effort. It's, it's the taxpayer of Gorham that is supporting this effort, and you'll have to, and I know you will, I know you will. One of the things I was questioning about is, of course, the water supply. What are we doing in the wintertime? You've got the valve, I know where the water house is, and, and someone's gonna be responsible for turning the water off, draining the lines, and all the other stuff. I mean, the little things I'm trying to think about. On page eight, we're talking about exterior lighting. With all the hard work that we've already done, we have some exterior lighting, and it will be shielded. We know we can do these 3D models, has there any shadows cast to show perhaps where lighting would be shown so that a butters won't be complaining about nighttime light, or are we, or is that way down the road?
I think that's down the road. We, we are not proposing any lighting. We thought, we have brand-new lighting near the softball field, which seems to be great. So, yeah, we weren't proposing any additional lighting as part of this plan.
All righty, thank you. This is a long-term project, several years, this is multimillion dollars, and we're only gonna be able to do a portion at a time, and, and from my perspective, my career, the home run would have been, this is phase one, this is phase two, this is phase three, this is phase four. It's no disrespect to anyone, and not, not my intent, but right now, we're looking at this thing, and we're saying, wow, this is great, and, and the audience is seeing it, and people at home are looking at it, wow, wow, and they're expecting this phase will be done, and no, this is gonna be phase one, no, that's phase one, that's phase one. So, there's a lot more work that has to be done to chisel out, this is phase one, this will be phase two, and it's all based on, as Tom Poria said, how, how much money is really available. Last but not least, I'm real not, this is my opinion, I'm not real happy about seeing a beekeeping area. There are many people that have bee allergies, bees tend to have a mind of their own, I don't know if we're gonna have any kind of injection thing, I'm, I'm very, very worried about that, that's my personal opinion.
Can I add something?
I got these.
There's, so there's an existing beekeeping area, and we are proposing to, to keep the existing beekeeping in where it is currently, but we're, yeah, so it's already out there. It's run by the high school students. We think it could be improved with additional educational signage, but generally speaking, we're just, we're keeping it where it is currently.
Okay, my ignorance, I had not visited it, thank you. I'm probably set enough. Anyone else? Anyone like to add comments, questions? Very, very well done, by the way, very well done. On the back of our packet, if we're so inclined, page 11, there's a suggested motion, if anyone would like to, comfortable initiating that?
Yeah, I will.
Mr. Burrows, please.
David Burrows, so, for site plan approval, I move to grant the Town of Gorham request for a site plan approval for Roby Park Master Plan located on MAP 106, Lot 47, in the urban residential zoning district, based on findings of fact and conditions of approval, as written by the town planner and amended by the planning board, but we don't have any amendments.
I don't believe so. Thank you, Mr. Burrows, if you have a second.
Mr. Frank, what second?
Mr. Frank, thank you, Mr. Frank. We all understand what we're approving here, it's a multi-phase project, it's gonna take years to be completed, we hope it could all be done next year, but not likely. Any, any other discussion about it? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you all, congratulations.
Thank you.
This is a great step forward. Thank you. You doing? Are you okay?
Forty-four years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on here, ready? Ladies and gentlemen, item two on our agenda this evening is a discussion, preliminary subdivision, Home Innovations, Mitchell Hill Road subdivision, proposal to create a clustered residential subdivision on a 32-acre parcel of land off Mitchell Hill Road, Zone Rural Map 1, Lot 12. The applicant is represented by Craig Burgess, P.E., with Acorn Engineering. Planning, like to open this up for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so this is Damon Yakovlev, Assistant Town Planner. So, to introduce this project, this is the third time it's been before the Board. What's being proposed is a clustered residential subdivision, which means that the development can have slightly smaller lot sizes and frontage than the underlying zoning would otherwise allow, and in exchange, permanently protected conservation land is steered over to the town or a conservation organization. So, this is the, again, the third time this has been before the Board. The first time was before the Board, the area that is to be conserved was established, that was on June 17th. So, part two, the applicants came back on August 5th and presented a concept plan for the actual area to be developed, so they laid out a concept with eight residential house lots. They got some feedback from the Board at that meeting. Additionally, there was a site walk on August 27th, where there's some additional feedback. Many members of the Board participated, and the notes from that are included in the packet. So, what's before you tonight is the next phase of the approval process. The applicant has, is coming before you with the preliminary subdivision application, and there's a few, many updates to the plan, more details that are included. So, some items of note that we'd like to call to the Board's attention, a Class A, high-intensity soil survey is required, should be included, a water supply cost estimator worksheet should be provided by the applicant to show that potable water can be provided, and whether that can be through extension of the public mains or on-site wells. Maintenance agreements for the shared driveways should be provided, to be reviewed by the town's legal counsel. The conservation area, public access should be discussed, there's essentially two ideas for where that public access could be, either at the end of the shared driveway for lots one, two, and three, or adjacent to Lot 8, so that's something we'd suggest the Board discuss with the applicant. Also, if you know, in the planner notes, we identified the, the state statute language about subdivision review on municipal borders, so this is on the border with Scarborough, and a portion of the lot is located in Scarborough, but it was sold off before the subdivision application came through, so it's, no, no developments proposed on the portion in Scarborough. So, we've shared this information with Scarborough Planning Department, so they're aware. We did include suggested motion language here to waive the requirement for a joint review between the towns, which would be required if there were development on both sides of municipal border, but since this is an outparcelled lot, in our view, that's, we'd suggest waiving that, Scarborough planners concur. So, that's in your packet here, and there's some additional staff and peer view engineer comments that need to be addressed. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Eleanor Roberts of Acorn Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of our client, Home Innovations, who is the applicant for this, eight-lot subdivision with a shared driveways, septic, private septic, and private wells for water and wastewater. As mentioned before, this is not the first time this plan has come before the Board. Since last meeting, we have refined some of our details about the construction of the shared driveways, the stormwater. We have submitted a full stormwater report for your review. We also received the comments from the town and from Wright Pierce, the, who is doing the engineering review, and, on Thursday, and we believe that, while I'm not going to go into all of the comments, there were, as you said, a few that stand out a little bit more. First and foremost, the high-intensity soil survey that we submitted, how do I, oh, I just realized, it's not showing. Oh, there we go, okay. The high-intensity soil survey that we submitted with these, with this application is a Class A, and so we will be updating that plan to make sure that that is clear and resubmitting Additionally, let's see, there was a question of the, if the shared driveway is going to be a private driveway, but that is not the case. It will be built to the private driveway standards, but it will be considered a shared driveway because the three lots that will have access off of it do receive their frontage from Mitchell Hill Road. As far as stormwater is concerned, we are proposing a level spreader and a plunge pool along the road culvert system to allow the water to slow and for some erosion control measure before the stormwater leaves the site in entirety. These can be found, one is proposed for the end of the shared driveway for lots one through three, and then the other is proposed for along Mitchell Hill Road, where there's been concern about runoff from the road there. The, part of the project would be installing this roadside ditch, which empties into the plunge pool- plunge pool, which then empties into the natural drainage of the wetland in that area. Additionally, we have received an offer, our clients have received an offer from Scarborough Land Trust, indicating that they are interested in purchasing the land in Scarborough in addition to receiving the land in Gorham, so that they can maintain it and keep it as open space. I understand that there's been some discussion about, will the town take the open space area? Will it be an HOA? Like, who will take care of it? And so we are still working through some of our options, but at this moment, it seems likely that we will move in the direction of Scarborough Land Trust, receiving the open space area. In addition to the local permitting, we have also submitted two applications to the DEP. One is a NERPA Tier 1 application for proposed wetland impacts, because we are impacting less than 5,000 square feet of wetlands. And then the other was a NERPA permit by rule due to grading getting within the 75-foot setback from one of the unnamed streams that runs through the property. Erosion and sediment control has been shown on the grading plan, and in addition to that, we have some details showing what we're proposing to help mitigate any sort of erosion damage. And yes, I, I hope with that, that the planning board will consider this adequate material to consider a preliminary approval.
Thank you. Members of the board, any questions?
You, you mentioned the stormwater drains and collection drains along the road. And whose responsibility will be to keep those clear of silt and debris?
So those will be in the public right-of-way. I, I'm not quite sure, but I suppose that it would be the town's responsibility as it is in the public right-of-way. It would be part of standard road maintenance.
Could we ask Mr. Norton?
Yep, she's correct. Those, if they're main, or if they're within the public right-of-way, it would be the Public Works Division that would take care of them. And just to add a note, the Public Works Director has been involved with discussions on this and has asked for those driveway culverts.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Nichols?
I have a question. You had mentioned the maintenance agreements for shared driveways, so I have a question about shared driveways. Are there any concerns about having a shared driveway as far as lenders go? I mean, a lender who, you know, for the individual homes, having an issue with having a shared driveway without an actual HOA?
HOA. So if I understand your question correctly, because when you said renters, I was, I was thinking you might meant if someone rented out the house that they own. But you mean the owner of the house?
If I said renters, I didn't mean it. I meant the owners, homeowners.
That's fine.
Yes.
That language, it will be part of their legal responsibility. If they did not want to have a use of the shared driveway, they would have to go before you all to show a site plan, to show a proposed driveway completely on their own property. And as we've discussed, or as it was pointed out in the site walk, the topography of the area is quite hilly. And so the whole, one of the reasons behind having the shared driveway is that it is in the opportu, it is in the best spot to have a driveway. So it's not going to be a secret from whoever buys the houses there. It's, it'll just be one of the components of making a decision of living there. Same with any other decision, there are pros and cons to it.
So I understand, and I have no issue with the shared driveways, but did you also say shared septic?
No.
Oh.
It is private septic.
Okay. I thought I heard that before, which surprised me. But, so with a shared driveway, say you've got three homes on that driveway, and the third home in is foreclosed on. And the first or the second home says, no, you can't come up the driveway to your, to that home, and doesn't allow the lender to get to the home to foreclose on it. So those kind of scenarios, like I'm just wondering if that's been considered, and if that has, is an issue, or could potentially be an issue?
So I'm not a, I'm not a legal expert, but my understanding of it is that it won't be owned piecemeal. So every, the three lot owners will have equal access and equal rights to all of the shared driveway. If someone tried to stop, for example, if Lot 3 tried to stop Lot 2 and Lot 1 from accessing their property, they would be found at fault of doing exactly that, because they would have no legal right to bar the way from the other property owners.
So that's, that's what would be in that maintenance agreement, or the agreement that would take place, or that they would all be involved, and all of the homeowners there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Colonel, please.
I just wanted to follow up on the driveway discussion, and I think this came up last time you were here, and you may not, I think this is really more for the town, because I understand that you made these weird L-shaped lots, so you'd have frontage on Mitchell Road, so then they could, they could legally, by code, have a shared driveway, right? That's why we have these weird lots. But that seems to be, me to be, kind of, I'm not faulting the plan, because I would do the same thing, but that doesn't seem really to be the best use of our code, to make these weird-shaped lots, so that developers can get around the code to build a shared driveway. So I would ask the town planners to kind of, like, is there an adjustment we can make to the code that would prevent these types of weird-shaped lots from being constructed, but still allow developers to build a shared driveway? If that's what the result is going to be anyway, if that wasn't the intent of the code, then let's change it. Either let's say, hey, this can't be done, we're not going to have these weird-shaped lots, and allow these shared driveways, or let's say, well, let's allow the shared driveways, but not have to have the weird-shaped lots. But it seems weird, it seems kind of incongruous for us to do it this way, and not maybe the best in long-term interest of the town, to have all these weird-shaped lots all over the place, and some people with shared driveways, and some people without shared driveways. So I would just ask us to take a look at that, and maybe we can bring it to one of our subcommittees to discuss further.
We've taken note of it.
Unless I've got something wrong. I mean, if I'm misconstruing this, please let me know.
No, there are, there are towns that have requirements for the shape of lots.
And could I add to this?
It's not far-fetched.
Mr. Burrows, please.
Sure. I was wondering if you considered, if you could get a zoning variance to waive the requirement that you have frontage for a shared driveway. Could you have had these more regularly shaped lots, even though two of them wouldn't have had frontage, and then still have a shared driveway, which of course would require zoning variance? Was that considered, or did you just say, here's the code, we're going to design it that way?
My understanding is that as, as long as we are meeting the code, it is not usually in our benefit to seek a code variance then. Like it's been said, if, if this is not what the town intends with the ordinance, then perhaps that's something that can be revisited by the town. But as it stands, we are, we are meeting the letter of the code, so.
Thanks. I think oftentimes, when there are rules and regulations, it's not what it says, it's what it doesn't say. Obviously, I mean, you know, creative people find a way to maneuver around it, so. Ms. Nichols, please.
Also, again, this more follow-up on the driveway, is that, so is it my understanding, am I correct in understanding that a shared driveway for those three lots is a more cost-effective way for the builders to get all three lots in that row versus building a roadway or a whatever is in between a roadway and a private driveway?
I don't think that was the reason for the shared driveway, as much as reducing the number of cuts to the road, right?
Oh, okay.
It was the access points to the road.
Which is a great idea. Okay.
Yes, due to the Mitchell Hill Road is...
But still, if it was a roadway going up there, and built to the spec of a roadway, and they had these little short driveways off it, it would do the same thing. It's still one cut off of Mitchell Hill Road, but instead of it being a shared driveway with these weird shapes going off, it would be a roadway with three driveways on it, three properties.
Well, in the, in the, it says it's going to be, the shared driveway would be designed to the gravel private way standard. So it's going to be designed to a, as a private way. It's just, it's just not a requirement, right, because of the code, so.
But that, but so then that is the other option, is to make it a private way?
Yes.
And then just have the driveways off of it? And if it's already being made that, to that standard, is there a reason that it's not just being called a private way?
My understanding is that there is some difference with the legality and with different definitions. Like, like it's been pointed out, we are going to be building this to the private way I am, I can look into it further.
Don't feel compelled to say something that you might have to retract later.
Yes, that is always...
Don't worry, you don't have to know all the answers.
Yeah, so I can get back to you on that. How about that?
Anyone else? I have, I'm sorry? Mr. Frank, please.
Thank you. Just an observation, comment really. The notion of, you know, having all three lots having frontage on Mitchell, I can see that would be a comforting feature to a potential buyer, as opposed to buying a chunk of land that is essentially landlocked. Just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I have one other question.
Colonel, please.
Yeah, so this is about the, I don't know how the transfer of responsibility for the land would go to the Scarborough Land Trust, but I don't know how the town makes that decision. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to make that decision here without hearing from the town, someone else from the town, about their thoughts about taking land in Gorham and having the Scarborough Land Trust be responsible for it. So I just don't know what the precedent is. If this is something that's common, that we do all the time, then fine, I just, I'm just not aware of it, but if there's any, if there's any history there, I would appreciate it.
The language in the ordinance gives three options for open space. A land trust, the town, or a homeowners' association. So it doesn't really matter what land trust it is. It could be any land trust. So they have, they've reached out to Scarborough, and Scarborough Land Trust has, has obviously stated that they are interested in, in all of it as a contiguous area.
And the Scarborough Land Trust is not run by the town in Scarborough?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not getting into a competitive...
Independent, yeah, yeah. Independent entity.
Yes.
Sure.
It's a nonprofit, similar to...
Presumptive.
Presumptive.
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes. Could you speak to the, some of the, well, I'd like to hear your opinion on the public access? You know, there were two options that were proposed. One is at the end of that shared driveway, and the other was right next to Lot 8, and what the, what the plan is going to be for that.
Yes, so now that Scarborough Land Trust is back in the game, so to say, we will need to confer with them about what they might prefer as well. That being said, we do plan to show a designated parking area in future submission, once some of those details have been solid up, firmed up, that's the word.
Okay, so just so to get back to this issue about some, the Scarborough Land Trust, I understand the Scarborough Land Trust could be any name at all, because it is a private entity, but just it would be, I would prefer to make, see that there is access on the Gorham side of, of the project.
Yes, I, I don't want to, the most ideal spots to have access are both on the Gorham side. So it would be surprising to me if instead the access was on Scarborough, because here, I can show you...
I believe we could make that a condition, if we, if we throw that strongly about it. This is only a preliminary, this is only going for preliminary approval, correct? Yes, they're going to have, they're going to...
It's a Gorham project, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, we could make that a condition.
I like that idea.
But it's also a preliminary approval, so they're going to have to come back.
Sure. Yeah, no, it's a great idea, Bill.
If I may, just to add to that, you could also ask them to show it on the plan. We've made a comment to that effect in here, so we've asked them to show both the parking and the, at least the start of the trail leading from the parking. You can ask them to show the trail location within a certain distance of, say, the property line for any of the house lots, just to make it absolutely clear to people that this is something that's approved and been reviewed by the planning board.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just to piggyback on Damon's thought, I think it would be wise to have that trail, at least on, in the easement, or have a location of that trail completely all the way out between those lots, so that both landowners on both sides clearly know what, what's going to happen.
Anyone, anyone else? I'm going to look to my right, on page 7, we had a motion, and I thought I heard, we don't have to do it, but should we do it just for legal notification? This is the motion to waive the recommendation that we can waive a joint meeting with Scarborough.
Make it perfectly clear, you should vote on whether to waive it or not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Yeah, I move to waive the requirement for jointly held meetings and hearings with the town of Scarborough, Maine, planning board for the review of the Mitchell Hill subdivision application, as allowed in Maine State subdivision law. Joint meetings since the land area included from Scarborough, Maine, is open space.
Thank you, Colonel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Welcome back. Any, any discussion? We're understanding of this, we don't want, well, we, we're waiving the opportunity to meet with Scarborough. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you for that, Colonel. I'm looking ahead, I'm looking ahead, I'm looking ahead. As I review page 20, there was a lot of concern highlighted that has not been met yet according to planning. We can backtrack to that, but I have one question, looking on page 24, when we get to that point, that an in-lie fee shall be paid in accordance with the ordinance rather than construct a public sidewalk along Mitchell Hill Road prior to the issuance of a building permit. My question is, and I'm going to be in trouble for this, if there's no sidewalk that exists now, how can we mandate that a sidewalk be required and charge them a fee for not building one, that we're going to keep the money?
It's not both, it's one or the other.
I understand, but there are no sidewalks there anyways.
I will explain the ordinance a little bit. We went through the ordinance for approximately a year and a half, about a year and a half ago. The, the town...
The, the town council thought that the existing language in the ordinance, it was spread all over the different codes, and it needed to be tightened up a little bit, and some more parameters added. So what we did is we put a overlay zone predominantly over the growth area of the town, that's in the comprehensive plan. We, slash, town staff and the town council worked on the growth area and shrunk down where they wanted it to be located. Literally went street by street and talked about each street within the growth area, in order to come up with the overlay zone for the pedestrian amenities. Believe it or not, this is better than it was. We had, we had some pedestrian requirements in the northern part of the town, which is quite rural, and so they decided that they didn't wanna add it into that growth area, but focused in, a little closer and tighter to the village and, and westward. That is my story about that. The, so you have an option. Sidewalks are required on-site, always. The ordinance also says you have to provide sidewalks to your site, well, it could run, you know, 14 miles, but, and I'm being a little facetious, we'd be instandish at that point, but it's just, it's up to the board, does it make sense in a certain area, in which case you would require the sidewalk to run to your development, or would you allow them to pay the fee in lieu? So there's two choices in this, in the ordinance at this point.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifier, because I think we did review the pedestrian overlay zone at some point recently?
You did.
And what you're saying is this road is in the pedestrian overlay zone?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I was gonna backtrack, I was looking at a number of items that the planning department has focused on, page 20, sufficient water supply, we haven't had any testing yet that I'm aware of, adequate soil and sewage waste disposal as reasonably foreseeable, and letter, letter F, Missouri Farm subdivision shall not result in undue pollution of air, superficial, or groundwater either on or off the site. Those seem to be highlighted for our attention. I know they have to be met if we go forward with this. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, if you had not seen it, yes, please, Ms. Nichols.
In the same area where it's highlighted?
I can't, I'm sorry, say...
On the same area where it's highlighted, on page 20? After it has, it highlights the, underlines the question, then it says the finding, so does that, I read that as being that they satisfied the question?
No, please.
If it's highlighted, it means it requires attention, and it hasn't met that, fully met that section. In these, in this case, it says that in order to meet that, they need to provide the water supply cost calculation, and the, flagging the updates that are needed to the Class A soil survey, and that, I think that's been addressed already, so it's something, that's why we flagged it for the board for the discussion this evening.
Thank you.
I guess I was just looking at the F, that one, where it says the finding is that it shall not result in undue, I read that as, your findings were that it's not going to cause undue pollution, so it was just my misreading of it, I think.
Right, we can clarify the template, and we have, I think this one may have just slipped through, so apologize for any confusion there, and, yeah, it's, if it's highlighted, that does mean it needs attention.
Okay, still.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions, concerns?
Question on the conditions of approval, I may? Item number five, can we? Underground electric, with that, would there be any other underground utilities, other than electric?
Underground electric is the only utility that we are proposing to extend to the site, all the other utilities, water and sewer, will be on-site.
I'm just thinking wires, like cable, TV, maybe?
That is included in the underground utility. Typically, those are all laid together in the same trench, and if we do not, we can provide a trench detail to better show the different layers, but...
I would just ask, because it said electric lines and not just utility lines in general. May I ask another?
If I'm reading that correctly, it says that the underground lines shall be inspected by code enforcement, not, not that there won't be cable, it won't be, it doesn't mean that there aren't other utilities under the, under the ground.
Electric will be.
But electric has been thrown onto the code enforcement.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Is that, does that satisfy you, Mr. Delaney?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Colonel, please.
Yeah, I would like, I would move to grant preliminary subdivision approval for Missouri Farm subdivision, located on map one, Lot 12, in rural zoning district, based on findings of fact and conditions of approval, as written by the town planner. I think we do have some amendments on conditions of approval tonight.
We want to update drawings to show where the path would be, or access to? You wanna, would Smith that?
Approval, sure.
Yes, consensus?
Does that capture what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
We put a toll booth there, so anyone from Scarborough pays, come over to Gorham? Kidding, I'm kidding, I don't wanna be, I got something coming up, I don't wanna get in trouble. Any other conditions?
No.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We heard Colonel's motion, second by Mr. Walsh, an additional comment is going to be that we update the drawings to show access to...
The open space area? To the open space area?
Is that what we want to define it as, I'll call it?
Sure. The, I have is that dedicated parking for access to the open space area, and trail be shown on-site plans.
Does that work for us?
Yes.
Consensus-wise?
Yes.
Thank you, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice, very good work, thank you.
Thank you, and have a nice evening.
How we doing? Okay, okay, shall we go on? Anyone need to break? We need to take five minutes? I'm looking upstairs, Georgia, if you wouldn't mind, please, we are gonna take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we're back from a quick recess, it is Monday evening, October 7th, 2024, we're working on item three, this discussion, preliminary subdivision in private way. My apologies, Regis?
Regis.
Regis? Nicole and Yorrell?
Yorrell.
Wood Road subdivision in private way, a request for a subdivision in private way extension off Wood Road and Daisy Lane, Zone Rural Map 54, Lot 9-3, the applicant is represented by Peter Delfonzo, P.E. with Delfonzo Engineering. Who would like to introduce this for us?
I'll go ahead and do that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, so again, Damon Yakov left, Assistant Town Planner, and so this application is for a five-lot subdivision, served by 975-foot private way, it's the second time it's been before the board, it was before the board back in November of 2022 for a sketch plan review. At that time, the applicant was looking to extend Daisy Lane and provide road frontage for the lots on that, and they've since changed the plan up, and are now proposing a access off Wood Road via the, with frontage provided via, an access provided via the, the private So some items of note to bring to the board's attention, well, first of all, we'll recommend that the board look at doing a, a sidewalk to further review this project. One of the reasons for that is that it does appear that the private way has, has largely been constructed under a driveway permit, so it's something that should be reviewed further, to see what the existing condition is at this point in time, whether it meets the two-to-six lot private way standards, is something that's gonna have to be evaluated. There is a very tight 50-foot setback between the existing house and the property boundary, and that's something that we've asked the applicant to provide more detailed survey information about, which they've said that, have stated that they, they are planning to do, so there can be a discussion about that. The town attorney has noted that there is a nine-acre outsale lot that's located east of the land that's proposed to be subdivided, so under subdivision law, that does need to be shown on the plans as an outsale lot, this has come up in some other subdivisions that have been reviewed by the board recently, if you may remember, so the, the outsale lot doesn't need to be included as a numbered lot or assessed for, say, soils and that sort of thing, but it does need to be shown and the existing, as part of the existing conditions, including structures on the outsale lot and other, other factors that may have bearing on this proposed development under review. So the applicant should provide more information about wetland impacts, and any DEP, Army Corps of Engineer, nerve permits that are required. The homeowners association documents need to be submitted for review. A Class A high-intensity soil survey needs to be provided, they need to submit water supply cost calculation worksheet, and there are additional staff and peer review comments in the packet that need to be addressed. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Peter Delfonzo, who's a civil engineer, here to represent the project. Again, the project is a five-lot subdivision at 102 Wood Road, it includes a 975-foot private way. The lot is designated as Lot 9-3 on map 54, it's located in the rural zone. The lot is 16.96 acres on the south side of Wood Road, and the site is presently improved with one single-family house that fronts on Wood Road, and recently, the owners have constructed a driveway with a permit from the town to access the back of the lot. And the road, the, the driveway was constructed to the two-to-six private way standard, in anticipation that someday they, they may have come before you to, you know, to get a subdivision approved. And obviously, we're here, and we're here a little quicker than we thought we would be, so that's why we're here right now. And we did get the memo from town staff with comments on it, and I can hit the highlights that Damon just talked about. The driveway, as I said, was constructed because the original way, Jorrell was going to build his mansion back there, and move back there from the, the little house that's out fronting on the road. The, the issue of the setback, we have, we have already done the survey on that, and the house itself is over 50 feet from the edge of the right-of-way, there is a little bump out on the, on the house that at one time, we believe, was a chimney, a metal vestus-type chimney that was enclosed, and right now, it's used, being used as a pipe chase for heat pump system. And Jorrell's going to meet with the code enforcement. And Jorrell is going to meet with the code enforcement to see if we have to do something with that, that little bump out on the house. With the abutting lot, we will add that to, to the subdivision plan. That is the lot over here. We have to, oops, got away from the mic. We need to add, they do have a driveway, a long driveway that goes in there, and they have a nice house out in the back there. We will add that to the drawing, to the subdivision plan and the information on that parcel. And we will do the calculations on the wetlands that have been, you know, impacted by the driveway. I believe it's, right now, it's less than 4,000 square feet. So we will check the requirements for DEP and take care of that issue. And we are working on homeowners association to, and the high intensity soil survey, there is a plan that, of a soil map in there that was done by a soil scientist, and it will be upgraded and stamped and provided as the Class A high intensity soil survey. The information, we have the information, we just didn't quite finish the plan for this submittal. And that's the highlights of those items. We have, I've looked through the remaining items, and they are, there's nothing in there that we can't get handled and submitted with the next submittal. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions and hopefully hear an approval for, preliminary approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delfonso. Members of the board, any questions? You're trying to follow through. The, the primary feature for me in this packet right now was the site plan. Site plan, review.
Get on the ground and.
And take a peek. There's nothing like actually seeing it right in person.
Especially the driveway.
The driveway is a concern, and it's been highlighted. But I'm only speaking for myself, and thank you for Mr. Delaney for bringing that up. But, and anyone else? Please, Mr. Frank.
Mr. Frank is a big fan of sidewalks. That's not sidewalks, it's sight walks.
Sight walks, thank you. There's no fee in lieu for sight walks. As we've looked at other findings and facts, there is, my opinion, a significant number of areas here that have been highlighted that have not been addressed. Mr. Delfonso says they will address those in the next go-around, which is what we would expect. But I think to kick this thing off properly, the sidewalk should be the, come before the cart. But I would like to hear other members and their concerns. Any questions now to ask Mr. Delfonso if he needs to address them? Mr. Walsh, please.
Yeah, I'm not sure who this question really is, should be directed to, but, you know, the issue of the driveway, I'm still pretty confused about this. And does the town, has the town looked at this driveway at all at this point, or is it still as much a question to you folks as it is to us as to the status of this driveway? Was it built, was it, was it, it has a permit, it was built as a driveway, but was it built beyond what the permit allowed?
So, thank you for the question. The applicant did get a street opening permit and got a permit to construct a private drive. The town does not typically oversee any sort of construction on private driveways. It's not within our purview. However, I, I did go out on site when this was being constructed. We had some questions about some stormwater erosion sedimentation control. So I did do a site visit for this particular one because it was quite a large driveway going back there. That being said, at that time, it wasn't being proposed as a private road, so there was no oversight from that respect. We have been in contact with the applicants and, you know, informed them. There's, there's some sort of, there's going to, going to need to be some validation in what was constructed and whether or not it meets our private road standard for acceptance.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
It is a matter of public record we received in your packet. You should have a letter from Mr. Brooks and Mr. Giddings with detailed photographs which raise some concern. We see stormwater flowing through the culvert, et cetera, ponding in the backyard perhaps, adjacent properties, et cetera, et cetera. So there's some concern there that is brought forward to us. And I think that's where the sidewalk could help tie some of these loose ends together.
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, I'd be, I'd be, like to hear from the applicant if they have any, anything to say with regard to this, this letter from the, from the neighbors because that is kind of startling through what I wrote on my comments.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, the applicant has anything to say about it, I'd like to hear.
Well, we, well, we received this today. This is the first, you know, today we did have a meeting with staff today, and we went, we went over the, the letter. And Jorrell can tell you about the construction. He was there and he worked with the contractor, so I'll let him.
Hi, my name is Jorrell Regis. This is my, my project. As far as the, some of the pictures that were in the concern, those are pre, that's before the road, the driveway was completed. So that, as far as like the erosion that you see in some of these photos, all that has been taken care of, all the culverts have been put in where they need to be. And, yeah, that's all, that's all I have to say about that. So it's just, that was just pre-construction before everything was all, the final coat was done, the grass had grown in on the side, on the banks and everything like that, so.
So if we were to look at this today, we would not find these conditions? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Sir, if, if you had constructed this, did you go by some design basis? Did you have some drawings by a registered land surveyor or someone to, to tell you how to backfill or slope or gravel or anything like that?
I mean, so the company that I hired to do it is, was a pretty respected contractor. So, I mean, I, I gave him my, my vision of what I wanted to have done, and he completed it. The specs, I believe that exceed you guys' standards, but.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney, if I may, should they have provided us perhaps with a drawing?
I, I mean, if it's a driveway, we don't require that. If it was intended to be accepted as a private road in the future, it would have likely been advisable to have a design, have it designed first. But again, we've had discussions with the applicant and, you know, we've let them know that there's going to be more requirements for testing to get it, to get it approved at the town level.
Sure, thank you. So from what I'm hearing, just my own opinion, is that you perhaps thought this piece of asphalt was going to serve one purpose, and now maybe it's going to serve another purpose. So maybe your initial idea didn't need a drawing, the contractor was doing it in good faith, and you were guiding that contractor along. But now if we're going to reassign what this asphalt is really going to be used for, intended for.
Just a clarification, it's, it's a gravel drive, correct? I don't mean to split hairs.
Okay, no, 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 thank you. I appreciate the, yeah, clarification.
Yes, obviously, Delfonso Engineering is putting together a set of signed plans, which satisfies that requirement. However, if it was done in a typical manner where the road was being constructed after being accepted, we would have been able to go out and see gravel sections be put in and the surface layer be put in. So that being, having not seen that, the town will require some additional coring and some analysis from a third-party engineer to say, yes, this is how it was constructed.
Sure, thank you. And we're all on the same page with this, we understand?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Please.
Just a question, so the, and the only setback we're concerned about is setback to the existing home of the applicant? There's no setback requirement problem with the adjacent property?
No other homes built on, on the road, my understanding, so.
Isn't there a setback requirement from another property line as well?
So for driveways, that setback is five feet, yeah.
It meets that? We don't know.
We have, we have a plan that says that, but again, we'd need some.
Okay, so he has sidewalk.
I am, I am familiar with drawings that say one thing and.
Yeah.
Don't necessarily, and that's my own experience, I'm not pointing fingers.
That's where as-built drawings, we require as-built drawings as well. So, you know, obviously, they have a set of drawings that, there's a road that has been constructed, so as-built should be pretty simple. But again, those would be verified through.
Sure, sure, and staked out, and we have benchmarks and everything else like that. And, thank you, thank you very much. Members of the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, based on this discussion, and it seems like the number of questions that will lead could be answered by a sidewalk, I'm not, I am not inclined to grant preliminary subdivision approval at this time.
So do I hear you say that you would like to postpone?
Yeah, I agree, and I'd like to hear from my fellow, fellow board members.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. He's encouraging other members to say something. Please, Mr. Frank.
With respect to the survey, I had to get my little magnifying glass. Survey was done by Mr. Libby of BH2M in January of 2022? Is that what I'm reading correctly on the documents here?
That's the original boundary survey, and then there was a lot split plan that was done by BH2M that took the other lot out.
Okay, and that was the September 2023 date?
Now, let me, let me go back to. I'm looking at this plan here. This is the outsale lot. This is the lot we're talking about, this subdivision, that's the outsale lot over here.
Forgive me, but would you take the microphone?
There is a portable microphone that.
Just have to turn it on.
Okay. This is the, the remaining land of Bajir, who owned this whole parcel and developed it. And then there was an outsale in 20, in 2022, which is over here. And now there's a driveway and a house to that, that lot, and this is Jorrell's lot here.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, but let me ask my question, perhaps in a more clarifying manner. My, my concern with the surveys, I'm looking forward from a sidewalk perspective, are these lines of boundaries and corners all nicely staked already?
Well, when, when the decision was made to come before you with a subdivision plan, we had the road that was built located by Steve Martin, the local surveyor. So we do, that plan, the subdivision plan is based on his survey and location of the road.
And so markers exist already with respect to the property boundaries? What's, what's on or in the ground that, that can guide us?
We're looking for, are there any monuments to delineate where these pinpoint locations are?
I'll, I'm not sure, I'll have to check that, and if.
Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Frank?
And we can have, we can have Steve Martin put some stakes out there that locates the boundaries of that, of the.
Thank you, that's very helpful for a sidewalk, thanks.
There are a few stakes out there. There's some, there's one up by the road, and there's also a few in the field, so there are, there are some stakes out there.
I'm sorry, I was jotting things down. Anyone else? Members of the board? The boroughs, please.
Rosie, I agree with David Walsh. I think we really can't assess this until we do a sidewalk, so we should schedule a sidewalk.
Thank you. Before we can schedule a sidewalk, we would need a motion maybe to perhaps postpone?
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion. What page is that on? Here, here we go, thanks. Okay, so I put forth a motion to postpone preliminary subdivision approval. Move to postpone further review of Wood Road subdivision, request for preliminary subdivision approval, pending responses to remaining issues and finalizing revisions to the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Boroughs, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We all understand we want to have a site review, but we're going to postpone this right now. Everyone on board with that? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. So we were going to schedule something mutually agreeable for all of us to attend, and it's going to be during the daylight, right, and before snow.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we'll aim for late, late October, third or fourth week of October, so we can have sufficient notice for the butters.
Do the, do the doodle thing and what, who's available and.
We'll, we'll send out a short fuse doodle poll tomorrow and hopefully get a.
On our new Outlook email, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
A few last minute things, I don't want to belabor this. We know that October is Community Planning Month, and there's all kinds of activities on Thursday afternoon from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. The town actually had a budget for some sweet treats. So please, if you can, go upstairs from 2:00 to 5:00 and enjoy some sweet treats, and there's crossword puzzles and.
Grow the planners.
Grow the planners, et cetera. And last but not least, from my end, we had a 2025 planning board schedule, meeting schedule included, it's probably followed everything that we've done in the past few years, but you can put it on your iPhone and whatever phone you're using, and we'll be good to go for the following year 2025.
Okay.
That is all I have, is there anything from anyone else? Any other business coming forward? Mr. Walsh?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a quick update, as I am representing the planning board on the Economic Development Strategic Plans Steering Committee. There's been quite a bit of activity. The town has hired Commoe and Associates out of Scarborough to do the study. They have started doing the study, presented some preliminary findings. They'll be submitting the, the study in, in entirety, will take about 11 months, but they've done some of the data analyses. Some interesting stuff has come up, and it is publicly available on the website. There is going to be a series of public, well, there's going to be a public session on October 15th in this room from 5:30 to 7:30. Everyone's encouraged to come in, there'll be some stations, learn more about the, what the, the economic development steering, strategic plan is, is all about. Hopefully, this plan will be well done and done in a way that will fit nicely into our next update of the comp plan, you know? And that, what I envision is fits right in as a chapter. And so we're hoping for that. There'll also be two days of meetings with local stakeholders. There'll also be two days of meetings with local stakeholders on the, I think, the 15th and 16th, or the 14th and 15th. But the, most of this will be local business leaders. They have been sent invitations. Hopefully, if there's any businesses whom you have discussions with that may bring this up or have said anything about it, please try to encourage them to come. There's a series of sessions, and trying to do it by business type, meet with them for like an hour, so. But again, the public session on the 15th from 5:30 to 7:30. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Walsh.
One more announcement.
One more?
We just kicked off the first meeting for the Open Space Master Plan. Today, staff met with the consultants that were chosen by the council, so that plan is underway as well.
Thank you. I hadn't heard from Tom, I serve in that, but we had, it was in between, so glad to hear it's moving on.
We're getting there.
Anyone else? Thanks to Georgia, thanks to the planning board and staff, Mr. Norton for attending, thank you for all your hard work on, to my left, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Don't, don't, don't fight about it, let's go. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
And I will second that.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Ms. Nichols, there's no reason to discuss this, we're all set?
We're all good.
All of us in favor? We were adjourned at, what does my phone say? 8:53 p.m. Thank you, everyone.
Walsh says no.